Welcome to the Norwood Board of Education meeting, Thursday, April 19th, 2018. Please call the roll.
Ballard.
Here.
Atwood.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Scott Dracy.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
Call second.
Second by Ms. Amber Burke. Please call the roll.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Did we need to pull something out on this?
No, we've already done it.
Okay, alright. May I have a motion for approval of the adoption of agenda for the regular board meeting?
So moved.
First by Mr. Faulkner. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item on the agenda are our presentations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're so glad you're here. Every month, we like to highlight one of the buildings and the goings-on in that building. And this month, we get to hear a little bit from Sharpsburg Primary and Elementary. And to get us started with our very special treat tonight, I'd like to welcome Principal Mr. Joe Westendorf.
Alright, the students are making their way up. They'll be following in right here in the front. Parents, thank you for being here. For Dr. Sabo, we appreciate you having us. Just real quick, you guys come on in. A big thank you to Mrs. Gallagher for all the work that she's done, one, just with this group and with our school in general. In case you didn't know, Mrs. Gallagher has a husband who's currently deployed in the Army right now. So she's taking care of, I feel like she's taking care of me, taking care of our building, taking care of our boys at home. So, Ms. Gallagher, we appreciate the work that you've done with our group. As soon as we get the second row in here, Ms. Gallagher will give us a quick rundown of what we're singing and what we have coming up here at Sharpsburg.
So, good evening, my name is Mrs. Gallagher, as Mr. Westendorf said. I am the music teacher at Sharpsburg Elementary, and these are our fantastic third graders. They have been working on a spring musical since about February. I think we've started music with them. And they have produced a fantastic draft. The music got a little too much going on because I hope that you'll come to the musical in May. The final performance for them is May 10th, in the evening at 6:30 at Sharpsburg. We're hoping the weather is nice because we like to try to do this outside on the playground in kind of like a picnic seating area. So, we will see if that is the case, with the weather or not. But the premises of this is that these kiddos are at home in a lot like today's society and lots of technology and lots of phones and gadgets and things. And then, something happens. And it's all kind of lost. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Good. Where is this? I'm already calling myself in the middle of this video. We'll all hear it.
Stay up late, feeling great. Glad to be here, this is a day I just can't wait. Gotta say it's my day. Maybe on my face it's something I won't say. Every dawn, up and run. Don't hear anyone, I got my headphones on. What I know, what I know. Everybody puts a boot in Nintendo. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life. I love my kid's life. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now.
Go.
Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here.
Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you.
I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry.
No, we...
No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Wow! Okay, let's cheer those guys. What are you doing? All fun! Stay up late, feeling great. Glad to be here, this is a day I just can't wait. Gotta say it's my day. Maybe on my face it's something I won't say. Every dawn, up and run. Don't hear anyone, I got my headphones on. What I know, what I know. Everybody puts a boot in Nintendo. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life. I love my kid's life. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go.
Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry.
No, we...
No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Wow! Okay, let's cheer those guys. What are you doing? All fun! Stay up late, feeling great. Glad to be here, this is a day I just can't wait. Gotta say it's my day. Maybe on my face it's something I won't say. Every dawn, up and run. Don't hear anyone, I got my headphones on. What I know, what I know. Everybody puts a boot in Nintendo. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life. I love my kid's life. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go.
Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry. No, we... No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go.
Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry. No, we... No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Wow! Okay, let's cheer those guys. What are you doing? All fun! Stay up late, feeling great. Glad to be here, this is a day I just can't wait. Gotta say it's my day. Maybe on my face it's something I won't say. Every dawn, up and run. Don't hear anyone, I got my headphones on. What I know, what I know. Everybody puts a boot in Nintendo. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life. I love my kid's life. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go. Go. Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry. No, we... No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go.
Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry. No, we... No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting small, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. It's a kid's life. I'm starting free, kid's life. Whoa, 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 whoa. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a kid's life, kid's life. Feeling free, got my feet. Feeling better, burning trees. Anyplace, anyhow. Feeling so excited, so sexy now. Go. Go. Hey, what happened?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn off the lights.
I can't get my PDA to work.
My laptop!
So did my Xbox!
Even my cell phone.
What are we gonna do?
You mean I can't text message my friends?
I can't get out, I can't get out, I can't get out!
I can't even get through.
My mother won't give my breakfast order?
This is a national emergency!
Okay, everyone, have a great time here. Well, Mom! How can we have a good time when all our tech guys are still?
I checked it out, I checked it out!
Oh, I'm sure you'll find something to teach you. I'm excited. Grandma and Grandmo will be here anyway to spend the day with you. You'll have a great time.
And that was really, really sort of easy what I've done. And a great day in the world.
Hey, what's up? Where's the lights? My PDA is crashing, nothing's working right. The cell phone's ringing, I have to cry. No, we... No way! I have to die! Ha! How about juice? Now we're stuck. Everything's broken, now we're out of luck. What a cry, what a mess. Being the kid can give you a whole lot of stress.
Lastly, we have Genevieve Rerica. Genevieve Rerica is a positive, kind, and respectful student who never lets challenging obstacles stop her from achieving her goals. She exhibits the traits of a highly successful student, which includes being goal-oriented, exhibiting problem-solving skills, and is always self-motivated. Her character traits include being trustworthy, honest, and sincere. Academically, Genevieve has made enormous gains in reading fluency, comprehension, and written expression. She is an amazing example to her peers, and she does lead by example. The second-grade teachers are proud to nominate Genevieve as William Elementary School Star Student of the Month, and they say, "Congratulations to you, Genevieve." So it's students like Genevieve that make Norwood City Schools great. Stay right there, rising stars. We want to shake your hand and get a photo. Moms and dads, you're welcome to take photos, too. You'll get another personal opportunity to take photos out on the stand. Congratulations, a second time for you. Congratulations, Sophia. Congratulations. We're still flying. Yeah, he said. I thought you did. We can all stay. Interesting things being said, and important things for you.
It feels like you're looking at me. I've got things to say, and it's nice to speak to people in that empathy.
Yeah, hi, Mary. I'm sorry, sweetie. Mark's a four. And he's not speaking, not the only one. And that's where we slide behind it. And he comes. That's my meeting fun right there. Big smile, which is fine, so I just have a good seat and smile that way. Hold on, one second. Okay, ready? One, two, three. And I'm going to do one more. One, two, three. Perfect. So, parents, you're welcome to escort your child out to the baby lobby. We're having to take more pictures with you. You're welcome to go back in, Genevieve. Yes, please do.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the Education Committee Report. Ms. Amber Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. Get caught up with the page turn there. All right, there we go. All right, there's only one item on there for today. The avenues for success field trip for middle school and high school students to the Shadewee Camp. That's the only one I've got this time. So I'd like to put that up. Motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Next item is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board. You'll notice on 4.01, a number of resignations. Numbers one through nine.
All right, may I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion for approval.
All right, Mr. Atwood, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item, 4.02, Employment. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board of Education. I'd like to propose recommendations for action regarding avenues for success under number one, certified supplemental contracts; number two, supplemental contracts; and number three, kindergarten camp, I'm sorry, summer school; number four, kindergarten camp; number five, kindergarten camp aides; number six, contract with Hamilton County Educational Service Center for appeal hearing designee; and number eight, resolution to hire non-certified coaches, which results in pupil activity contracts.
All right, may I have a motion for approval of the items listed?
I'll motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ballard, Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Bless you.
Thank you.
That wasn't on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Next item, 4.03, the non-renewal. Dr. Sabo.
Yes, Madam President and the Board of Education, I'd like to recommend the non-renewal of number one, educational aides and student assistant aides; number two, non-renewal of classified substitutes; number three, non-renewal of avenues for success staff after-school club providers; number four, non-renewal of 21st Century Grant After-School Program Coordinator and Assistant Program Coordinator; number five, non-renewal of a physical therapist.
All right, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Faulkner. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I just wanted to let the Board know that I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Abstain.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item is Policy Committee Report. Mr. Atwood.
Thank you, Madam President. This month, I would like, with the Board's approval, I would like to make a motion to have the second and final reading and the approval of the following new policies and revisions to our board policy document. Those are all included under item one. If necessary, I will go through and read them, but I think through the agenda, consent agenda, I could just list them as item number one. So with the Board's approval, I'd like to make a motion to have the second reading and approval of these policy revisions.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Building and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Bryant?
Oh, yes, Madam President. With the Board's approval, I'd like to make the following motion for item six, 101, facilities for the items listed below, one through four.
Okay. We have a motion for approval of Buildings and Grounds, items six, one through four, by Mr. Bryant. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item is the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Faulkner?
Thank you, Madam President. By recommendation of committee, I'd like to make the motion for the approval of item 7.01, the financial reports; 7.02, the approval of the builder's risk insurance; 7.03, the approval of additional scope architectural services for the middle school renovation; 7.04, the approval in construction testing services; and 7.05, the approval of transfer of funds.
All right, we have a motion for approval from Mr. Faulkner. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Madam President, I also would like to make a motion for the approval of item 7.06, the approval of the janitorial contract.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the janitorial contract. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I do have one item that I would like to discuss related to this motion. I've spent a great deal of time thinking about particularly this contract that we're possibly awarding tonight, and there's a number of issues that I have with this. Number one being because the contract that we are potentially approving was so significantly lower than the resulting other contracts that we've gotten on this bid, leads me to believe one of two things happened. Either, one, the bidder didn't know what he was doing and put together a very low bid, or, number two, they cut so many corners in order to guarantee this contract that they're just so much lower than everybody else. What I am concerned about with the award of this contract specifically to the contractor that we may be awarding this to is the quality of service has suffered over years. This is the same janitorial contractor that we've used for years, and the quality of service has just been extremely subpar. And is it subpar because they're just not good at what they do, or is it subpar because they cut corners? I don't know. But because of these reservations that I have, I will not be voting to approve this contract.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to make note that this contract is only going to be servicing through the 2019 school year so that it can be an evaluation period of those services and concerns that you had mentioned before. So I had very similar concerns, but I am willing to give somebody the benefit of the doubt and hope that they can redeem themselves at that price point, and hopefully we can maintain good relations with that company, and if not, it can be evaluated for next year. So is there a provision in place that if halfway through that contract, they're failing to meet services, that we can make a decision later on this year, in next year's school period, if need be?
I do not believe that there is a cancellation.
There is no cancellation. Once we award it, I mean, we're...
So it is for the full year, and only evaluation will be made at the end of next year?
But we have discussed the concerns in the past, and we have requested from the people that are on board in the buildings to let us know if there are problems, situations that arise, when they arise, so they can be addressed directly with the company.
I believe they're going to be doing a survey of the staff at this point to find out areas of opportunities of improvement. So it looks like they're making the effort at this point to make some improvements.
Adjustments.
And another point on that lower bid, they'll also have less building to maintain for next year because of the construction. Half of the middle school building at a time will be down for construction phase, so that could be another reason for them thinking we need less manpower for that particular building that could affect our rate.
Well, I mean, it would have been the same for everybody bidding on the contract, so...
True.
All right, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
No.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, by recommendation of committee, the motion to approve item 7.07, the approval of the Duke Energy Power Line Extension; 7.08, the approval of the construction change order limits and procedures; 7.09, the approval of contracts for fiscal year 2018 financial statement preparation; 7.10, the approval of the HSESC Service Agreement for Expulsion Hearing Officer; and 7.11, the approval of the CBRE Re-Order Consulting Services.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the items listed. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Please call the roll.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
And that concludes finance.
Thank you. All right, item eight is the Hearing of the Public. We have two requests this evening. One from Amanda Brickler, if you'd like to come up and address. I'm just going to go ahead and read what our requirements are. For public participation at board meetings to improve communication between the community and the board, the public participation in committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Residents wishing to speak to the board, fill out this form, which you have done. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. No more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. I'm Amanda Brickler. My son is a kindergartner at Sharpsburg. We started at preschool at Williams in their Montessori classroom, and our second year there was fantastic. Mrs. Zunni is a wonderful teacher. He grew phenomenally, and we applied to continue to stay at Williams and were denied for reasons that were never explained, fine. So we enrolled at Sharpsburg, and throughout the year, he has developed a good relationship with his teacher and has shown growth, which we would hope. But we've had some bumps along the way, and each time, we have addressed it first with the teacher to follow the chain of command and how that works, and then have gone up to the principal, and then I've had the pleasure of emailing Dr. Sabo twice now with our concerns. It started off with, he fell on the playground, hit his head, and we found an enormous goose egg on accident because the nurse failed to call and inform us of his head injury. And when we addressed it with her, we were told, "Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't do my job," which was a concerning statement to come out of a staff member's mouth. At that point, we addressed it with Mr. Westendorf, and the problem was resolved. And each time, he went to the nurse's office, because kindergartners are always in the nurse's office, we got a phone call, which was great. Then we had an issue with another child who was calling him names and physically pushing him around, and it turned into a bully issue. I don't like to use that word often, but that's what this was. Again, we addressed the teacher, we addressed the principal. As those situations ebb and flow, it got better, it got worse, we continued to communicate. After that, there was, we discovered in his backpack some Title I materials, which is fantastic. We got no information that he was receiving Title I services. And as an educator myself, I know you need parental consent to have Title I. You're also required to have communication logs, and there's been zero communication. We've got no benchmark data. We've received no communication on his progress with those services. In addition to that, the kindergarten works with OT every Friday, and our son was identified to get extra help. Great! Again, that's a service that needs to have permission signed on a very specific form. The incorrect form was sent home after we already discovered he was receiving services, and I requested a form. When I pointed out that it was the incorrect form, I was promised that the correct form would come home. This was four to six weeks ago, we still haven't seen it. But I wrote out a handwritten note to give permission because we want him to receive the services that the district is offering. And again, we've received no feedback on his progress. We talked with the teacher, we talked with OT, we talked with Mr. Westendorf, and requested a team meeting, which happened. And at that point, we did get some information on both Title I and OT and how he was doing. To top all of that, we were talking in the community, because Norwood is not very big, which is both a blessing and a curse, and we found out that Williams Avenue is planning eight field trips for their kindergarteners this year. Norwood View has gone on at least five. So I inquired with the teacher, and Sharpsburg has none. I offered at that point with the teachers, the whole team, and the principal, to I would help plan and secure financing, having written field trip grants myself, so that they could go on at least one opportunity this year, and was very politely told, "Thank you, no, it's not safe or feasible for us to do that." So my concern is, why is it safe and feasible for the other two schools to go on many field trips, and these 60 children in our lowest economic school get nothing? And that's what brought me here today, was to bring you all aware of the disparities between the three schools and how our Sharpsburg kiddos are missing out on what appears to be quite a lot, even at the curriculum level. We have boxes and boxes of BlackLine masters that have come home, and other kids in the two buildings are working on projects and three-dimensional things and reading literature, and we continue to get photocopied books from unknown sources. So I wanted to bring this to you, just so you had the information and feel like I was being heard.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next request is from Alice Rerica.
Okay, I have two things to talk to you about tonight. It's a little crazy. I should break it up between months, but they're both here this month. First of all, I want to talk about our food service. Mr. Kip is the director, I guess we'd call him, of our food service. If the community does not know that, that's his name, Roger Kip, and you can contact him anytime with any questions. And I believe he does a fabulous job, and his interns, and he used to have a nutritionist, dietitian, whichever one's the better thing, but she, and she was so great, she had to go to another job, and she was so fabulous. And they did a fabulous job revamping our food so it was as nutritious as they could possibly make it. I've eaten the lunch at the high school. I'll tell you, I had a salad with chicken on it, and I had a banana, and I think I had some frozen grapes. It was fabulous. Kids might not choose that, but they have an array of fabulous choices. I've seen it, I've taken pictures of it. I could get it out my phone and show you all the pictures of the great food. I've even taken a parent to go see the fabulous food, because as you know, sometimes they talk about lunch on Nord Strong. And I took a parent to eat that lunch, and she was astounded. She couldn't believe, after what she'd seen on Nord Strong, that what was actually available to these kids. It's fabulous. What we need for the food service is full support from the top down. So everyone here, and all our teachers and all our principals, need to support the food service. They're not just feeding our kids, they're also teaching our kids about nutrition and what they need to fuel their bodies. If we want high academics, we need nutrition. If we want great sports, we need nutrition. I know that even Mr. Kip's, the words escaping me now, the people that help him, that come in and help him from college, the interns! The interns are helping to teach health class in the high school, and I came in one day, not to the health class, to the kitchen, and they showed me these test strips that you put in your mouth, and if you can taste it, and it tastes terrible, then you're a supertaster. It was really interesting stuff, and guess what? I'm a supertaster. And if you taste nothing, then you're not a supertaster, and this can all affect, like, if you're a picky eater or not a picky eater, and all that sort of thing. And I'm a supertaster and not a picky eater, so that was strange. But also, we need community support for our food program, which means if you can buy, buy the lunch. And then guess what? Everybody in Norwood schools has free breakfast available to them. Some schools have it more available than others. Some schools, you have to go and get it, and some schools just serve it to their kids. Sharpsburg and Williams serve it to their kids, and the kids can eat it in their classrooms. Norwood View does not have it as seamless yet. I hope they get it seamless and can take their food into their classrooms so their kids can get breakfast. That's so important and such a great benefit to living in Norwood. Also, I hope that if Norwood schools can have free lunch across the board, you guys figure out how to make that happen. I hear that it is possible. So wouldn't that be so awesome if we could all have free lunch? Because we have so many kids that are on this shaky line of, here's free and reduced, here's not, and there's kids right on that line who are in complicated family situations, who, you know, their parents are working, 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 and we're paying the bills, and now there's not enough money left over to pay for lunch. And we need to figure out from the top down how we're going to solve that problem of getting those kids served. And also, a lot of the free and reduced lunch kids aren't applying for the service, which is due to them, right? We need to figure out, how do we make that happen? You know, not just saying, "Here, do it. Make it happen. Get those kids covered, because otherwise, we're not getting lunches paid for," right? We also need community support. Buy the lunch, eat the breakfast. And what also that looks like is, we had a great example tonight. We heard the kid sing, and she said, "Mr. Westendorf deserves, or we deserve pizza from Mr. Westendorf," right? Well, Mr. Westendorf can call Roger Kip and say, "I need nine pizzas for my musical kids." And Roger Kip can get that pizza for them. That is supporting our food service, not calling 471111, whatever that number is, I don't even know, because I don't call it. Ordering pizza from inside. Oh, jeez, well, pizza, I have another thing to talk about? Okay, well, that's food service, and I have a lot more to say about that, but maybe another time. The other thing is ASAP Norwood, the drug coalition. I had a request from some of you to get, so last night at my house, there was a training session to train people, to talk to other people about preventing drug abuse, and this one was particularly across the generations. So we have some information for you. These are for all of you guys, and this is particularly for Amber, who wanted all this stuff. And it is so great, anyone can contact ASAP Norwood on Facebook, message them, Angela Pancella, and say, "I too want to be a facilitator." They can come to my house and learn how to train people, to talk to other people about drugs, or have people come to your house, and you can have one of us who have been trained come to your house and talk to your friends about...
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item are our reports. 9.01 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President and the Board of Education. We have wonderful news to share. Tonight, actually, just in about 10 minutes, our high school students will be inducted into the National Honor Society, and I'd just like to recognize them because, of course, we'll still be working here while that's taking place. The names of these students are Zania Allen, Haley Baker, Madeline Baker, Odessa Birch, Star Brock, Abigail Carmen, John Cole, Scotty Fields, Caitlin Heil, Olivia Jones, Mandy Leach, Tanner Leach, Destiny Lortos, Cynthia Martinez Gomez, Henry Mattingly, Lillian Peter, Presley Riggs, Shelley Robbins, Lilith Rose, Paitlyn Rudd, Sydney Ryan, Olivia Triant, Hannah Rell, and Maggie Westerbeck. And we are so very proud of their academic success. Ohio Achievement Assessment Testing is coming to a close. We've actually truly started it, and of course, in the weeks ahead, it will come to a close across the state. We certainly appreciate the commitment of our teachers to teach the state curriculum standards, as well as prepare our students for the active testing. And we anticipate the results this summer, and of course, they'll certainly be discussed right away and examined and reviewed as we start this upcoming school year. On Saturday, April 21st, which is just this coming Saturday, from 10 to 2, the Norwood Alumni Association will host an open house in their alumni room located in the basement of the middle school. They have many artifacts and Norwood memorabilia that warrant positive memories for many grads and represent our tradition of an excellent education with multiple experiences, ultimately developing us all to be well-rounded individuals. And they continue to accept donations, of course, monetarily, but they like artifacts also. The Annual Fine Arts Expo, you know, the district has a long, long history of supporting the arts, and so the Fine Arts Expo will take place this Sunday, it's April 21st, 22nd, I think, from 10 to 2, and the student work will be represented across the district and displayed in our middle school and high school, and you can see some of it already up for display now. This month, I have hosted multiple luncheons with the support of the Alumni Association in order to meet each of our high school graduating seniors, and I've learned about their next steps and why they love Norwood schools. And students continue to confirm that teachers show they care, they appreciate their personalized education, they love that we are family by taking good care of one another, and that we really are a community. All things I would have said as I was a graduating senior. So our graduating class of 2018 will do great things, and it's our students that make Norwood City Schools great, and I just want to remind everyone that graduation is at Centas, and it's on May 22 at 7:30 PM. And the community will come together this summer on Tuesday, July 4, for Norwood Day Parade, and the parade will begin at 7 PM, and it's followed by the next day with the Norwood Day at Old Coney on the 25th. And then I'd like to end my report for you with some sad news. Our former superintendent, Dave Query, passed away last weekend. He was well-loved, he was my superintendent as a young teacher. He was the eighth superintendent to serve Norwood City Schools. He was the eighth superintendent to serve Norwood City Schools. He served us from 1981 to 1990, and he will be missed greatly. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sabo. Next item is the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Faulkner?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few items for you this evening. We had another spotlight student at the Oaks this month. It was Jasper Johnson. He is an automotive and collision student at the Oaks. Also, wanted to point out that the qualifying seniors are eligible for job placement. Jasper is one of those qualifying seniors. It's kind of like the old co-op program we used to have here in Norwood where they go out and work in the world part of their school day. And then they get their enrollment numbers for the year. They have 1,494 students at the Oaks this year. They're at capacity for the incoming juniors, but they still have a few spots for the other upper classes to go in there as well. And then the last item is they passed a resolution at this past meeting to place a levy for the Oaks on the board in this November's ballot. So just to make sure everyone's aware of that. And that concludes the Great Oaks Report.
Thank you. Next item is Avenues for Success. Amber Ballard?
Thank you, Madam President and Board. They've been busy at avenues. I got a report from Laura detailing all the things that's going on right now, and I am surprised she even had time to email me. First, they are applying for five grants right now. Three are going to be continuing ODE 21st CCLC grants. Those cover Norwood High School, Norwood View, and Williams. And two new grants that will cover the middle school and Sharpsburg. So we are wishing them luck in those in those grants. They have a date set for their end-of-year banquet, which will be on May 4. They do not have a rain date set. It is going to be weather permitting on the middle school lawn. They do have the date set, as I've been telling you guys for the last couple of months, about Glow for the Cure, which will be May 12. They still maintain the rain date for that as May 19. Currently, they are doing enrollment for their summer blast camp, and they are projecting a 50-student enrollment for that program for this summer. They are also working on expanding their career avenues for next year. They're going to be adding eighth grade to that list of potential career futures with high school mentors for the program that are currently in their careers program to help out the eighth-grade students coming up. They are also exploring creating several new potential clubs for next year, including a STEM club, family self-defense club, and an ASL club, which, since I'm an interpreter, I really love that they're doing that program. And what's coming up right now in April, on April 28, they're hosting the Norwood Spring Cleaning Drive, and that'll be at the Norwood Middle School parking lot from 11 to 2. And what they'd like is folks in the community to start cleaning out their house and anything that they have that are household goods and clothing that are in shape to be donated. They're going to do a drive-up and drop-off that day, again, 11 to 2. So anything that you guys don't need, but you think somebody else could really benefit from, please think about participating in that program. It's in partnership with the Salvation Army and Avenues for Success. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is the Legislative Report, and I am listed, but I pass that to Mr. Atwood.
Yeah. So on the legislative side, it's been a little quieter this month. House Bill 512 has disappeared from the committee schedule. They have put on there that there could be a potential subbill reintroduced at some point, but they're not saying when that's going to be. So we just have to maintain vigilance on what's going to happen with House Bill 512. What I'm hoping is, is once the primary season happens and people start running for the general election, and it does get reintroduced, that this could end up being on the platform for a lot of general election. And then that would keep anything from happening at least until after November. So that concludes the Legislative Report.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Yeah, let's see, where are we? Do we have any announcements for the public? Any board announcements? Nope. Okay. When is our prom?
May?
May 4.
May 4?
Yeah.
Where's it being?
Flying pig weekend.
Flying pig.
Oh, come get dresses at Danielle's Legacy this Saturday, 12 to 3.
Thank you.
Even if you have money to buy dresses, come get a free one. Why not get it free, right?
All right, thank you.
Remember it was CDs.
The next item is meeting notification. We have approval of future meetings. May I have a motion for the approval of our future meetings on Tuesday, May 8, in the boardroom at Williams Avenue, and our regular board meeting Thursday, May 19, at Norwood High School Mini Auditorium?
Motion?
Motion for approval by Ms.?
I think that date should say May 17.
May 17?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody check that.
Actually, I think it is, because I can.
Yes, 17.
Okay. So our regular board meeting will be Thursday, May 17, in the mini auditorium. May I, and Amber?
Mm-hmm. I'll still motion.
May I have a motion for approval?
So do we need to amend the agenda to reflect the correct?
No, because we haven't voted. We hadn't, we caught it before we voted for it.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Faulkner. Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item is executive session. We will enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. And in accordance with ORC 121.22G5, matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Okay, we will enter in executive session at 7 o'clock.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?